We'll get started with our Port of Allen special meeting here on the 8th of January. We'll start out with our pledge of allegiance. Please join me. All right, so the the purpose of today's special meeting is to discuss the the Allen Carey water system. We've been asked to utilize our well as part of the testing Mr. Carey's proposed water right. It would be helpful to the port if Jeff could begin by outlining the request. We would also ask that he would address the issue of overlapping water service areas within the port and your position on that issue. Lastly, if you could share with us what you know about the Department of Ecology's position on that issue as well. And lastly, we've called on the commissioners or the engineers on this call to also ask and answer questions. Jeff, you're on mute.
You got me now?
Yep.
There you go.
Thanks.
Okay, so you had three, three, three questions, right?
Yeah.
I got, I got two of them, so I'll start with the outline. That was the first one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. In pursuing the water rights nowadays, Department of Ecology is requiring observation wells in pump tests, you know, in the same aquifer is when that that exists, when that situation exists. In this case, the ports well and our well are in the same aquifer. And so basically, the Department of Ecology created a permit, preliminary permit to do a pump test to pursue and to hopefully wrap up our portion of what, you know, acquiring water rights. In this permit, then we hired Robinson Noble. They actually worked it years ago. Actually, about 10 years ago. And so they picked, picked up the baton and created a, have an agency, as he titled it, an agency review draft, which I believe all you commissioners have in front of you, or at least, at least has been sent to the port. And in there, this is kind of like, this isn't the nitty gritty detail of the plan, but it's the preliminary overview to get all parties on board to understand at least basically what's going to be required. In doing this test, as I understand it, and I'm not, not a hydrologist in any way, shape or form, but as I understand, they need, Department of Ecology wants a 24-hour full test at our 425 gallons per minute for 24 hours. There's a preliminary phase where you besides setting up all the, you know, equipment for monitoring and all that, there's, you know, getting in sync with the tides, it's getting in sync with the barometric pressure, it's getting in sync with how the port uses its water. And then getting in sync with ours so that we can still convey water to our 14 users. So, so that's, that's the, the gist of the background of that phase. So what Department of Ecology wants us to do is while this test is going on, have an observation well so they can be measured what our impact is, if any, and to what degree on wells within this aquifer that you're, you know, the ports in and that we're in. And my understanding that there's like, like I say, a couple of days run up, the actual day of the test, and then there's a day or two on the letting everything settle out so that, you know, the hydrologists can have the data they need to, to compare the report for Department of Ecology. As, as if you read the full letter all the way, or the draft report all the way through, there are different things the hydrologists can do to mitigate any impacts on the Port of Allen as far as the use, you know, of their water. Common, if you, you know, the first impact everybody has is saying, well, shoot, if this system has to be down and we're doing this whole test, that's not going to work because obviously the port's providing water to customers too. But one of the, one of the reasons the Port of Allen's well was picked or looked at seriously was the fact that even, even, I'm sure it's even currently the same, but obviously you have more customers since this, we first started doing this. We, I talked to Larry on and off, probably since 2000, late 2017, early 2018 about this. And we've kind of put it off. It's one of those heavy duty expenses in the water system where when it gets down to it, you don't want to do it until you really have to do it. So we've come to that point as the next step for the tribes, for the Department of Ecology and what have you. So back at least in 2018, February, had Larry provide me some documentation as to what the port's consumption was, at least on a daily basis, and how the pump was working. And through the analysis of that data, plus then later on in the year when you produce the, your 2018 water system plan, Robinson Noble had, you know, created a draft for me, but at that point, we're going back and forth, different options between us and the port, but nothing, you know, like not at the same point where we are today, at least more of a, you know, discussion, but not nailing it down at any point. Up, up till, till about, I'll just say up through September or late August, at least all parties were at least talking to each other and at least somewhat agreeable to, okay, you know, we need to know the details, but okay, the, the test sounds fine, let's look at it. So that's kind of the outline getting us up to this point. My understanding and, and, you know, again, I have not done one of these myself, but is that somebody will be monitoring our system 24/7 through this whole process. And when I say somebody will be, won't be the hydrologist, but it'll be more than likely either water system engineer or some party monitor to get the results and make sure that everything's logged all the way through. And likewise with the port, in the beginning, there'll be more monitoring when the initial part of the test goes. But as it goes on, my understanding, it's less and less and less until we get to the pump stop phase. And then again, there's more frequency of reviewing the data. And then it gradually trails off also. But it's my hydrologist's view that be, and again, consumption issues, you know, water may have changed somewhat, but it looks like there are periods of time where, as the hydrologist says, your, your water system's quiet while, while ours can be pumping and then when we're done testing. And, and not adversely impact the port in the sense that, you know, all customers will have water. You will still have fire flow, you will still have all the things to have, it's just that we're coordinating schedules with the pumping. So I think that kind of outlines it in, in just what we're trying to do as far as that. Your third, your second question was? Scott?
Not sure where he went. I do want to ask everybody who's participating if they would mute until they want to speak because there's a lot of background noise. Please mute your phones if possible because this is being recorded and we've had some comments about it's difficult for recording to carry on if people are not muted. So just wanted to interject that. So
Can you guys hear me now?
Okay.
Can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so the second part was asked that you address the issue of overlapping water service areas with the port and your position on that issue.
Okay, the overlapping service areas. Where do I begin? One, let's start with this, the, the service areas have been established by Department of Health. They approved ours in 2016 July. They approved yours later on. Much, much of this whole thing has been where there's the whole reason our well came into the existence, and maybe this is more of a historical point of view, is because the Port of Allen had a water system plan in 2003. And there was, by that plan, no way water was going to come up into the plat easily, up in the inner lands of the plat, up above the port. So my family and others that I knew that had lots in there saw that we needed to take action. And so we basically started a water system to, and submitted an application to Department of Ecology to acquire roughly 100 acre feet to service our lots and, and adjacent neighbors and what have you. Along the way, things, things have changed along the way. But the, the short and sweet is, is that we had submitted a plan, but because we didn't have water rights and laws and the water rights were changing as I understood it, Department of Health said, okay, rolling and let you be a group B at this point. And relegated us back down to group B. In other words, we had submitted a service area plan as early as 2000, I believe, five or six, you know, again, servicing the area of the plat. This so not knowing when water rights were coming and all those kinds of things. But so the Department of Ecology has had that, Department of Health at Mason County has had that during, during the different, we had submitted the, in 2012, an update to our plan to the county so they could see the service area to make sure that we were not in conflict with growth management, you know, where the county was going with, with its comprehensive plan. And like I say, up to 2000, I'm trying to think, 2016 is when ours was adopted, 2017 or 18 was when yours was adopted. There was a plan submitted by the port in 2013. But again, it only included just a very small portion of the service area we're talking about. Our current service area that's approved by the state is approximately 17.2 acres. It fronts, at least in the beginning, up front, roughly about 82 lots. So our position on, on that whole issue has been that we've jumped to the hoops, got our service areas, got our areas. And, and the whole reason that any development's been able to occur in the plat of Allen at all has been what my wife and I, Debbie, have put up the money to bring sewer up into Blackwell Street and into that area. And so, so so it's been a, it's been a long, hard process. Ports spend a lot of money putting in its infrastructure. We've put a lot of money to put our infrastructure plus the sewer in. And at the same time, we've been trying to work out different ways to make this work between both parties along the way, but we are where we are today. So again, my, my, my position on it is we've both gone before the state. I think personally, reading the statutes on the RCWs with ports, with water systems, I, my belief is, at least reading the language, that Department of Health isn't doing its portion to manage this problem so that we, we don't have this overlapping issue. In other words, if, I think I, I poured a couple of maps to Larry this last night so that the board would have at least a quick idea where the service overlaps are. There's an area, a wire area that overlaps with yours, which overlaps with Washington Water. Technically, that shouldn't occur. The problem is that Washington Water was not willing to put any infrastructure in. And we were and eventually port was. So the issue of service areas has really been compounded really by Department of Health. We follow the regs, you follow your regs to getting your plan approved and not, and they did the same thing with Washington Water. You actually have, if you look at the map, you'll see there's an area, a south area of ours, north area of Washington Water, and obviously the port where they overlap badly. So I guess that would address the overlapping. You know, my, my position going forward is we just want, again, the whole purpose of the well was to serve those lots up in that area. As far as any increase in the service area, it would be just adjacent to what the existing boundaries are where our family, our neighbors have lots. And we're basically looking at serving this, this corner of the plat, so to speak. So okay, so I guess that addresses the service area. I would ask the commissioners, you know, look at that, you know, that was maps. I send another one where it's like in the zoning that you could see where our zone is, and if you look at the map, you'll see a similar shaped boundary, although much smaller. But laid out and how to interfaces between Lakeland Village, between Washington Water, between port, between us, and even other group Bs in the area. So anyway, I won't overburden that.
Follow the maps.
Yes.
Yeah. And the last thing was if you could share with us what you know about the Department of Ecology's position on that issue as well.
You mean on the overlapping service areas?
The overlapping service areas.
Without putting words in their mouth, I mean, they're a little frustrated because this would have been a lot simpler had everybody, when I say everybody, and I don't mean anything against the port or anybody, but if everybody had just followed the guidelines, because we had senior, I was a senior applicant to the port, actually. So, and I had provided the ecology, the material, and then ecology took a hard line on some things. And basically said, if you pay for the lawsuit, you can move forward. And I said, what lawsuit? With the one we're going to have with the tribes. And I said, and, and so who's talking to you? So it went around and around for a number of months. It was supposed to be pulled through on the cost reimbursement program that the port was under. But it never, it stalled out. And I don't have a limit of dollars, so, you know, as long as so far you can push something. But, but the bottom line is the port or the Department of Ecology would like to solve this. They've been in touch with the tribes. They've talked about a number of different issues with all of this. The, the issue is really, you know, it gets down to a number of points, but you know, as long as I can mitigate, just like the port or anybody else can mitigate their water rights usage and demonstrate the impact of what their well is capable of doing on the aquifer, then their, their feeling is to move forward. Because at least ecology is telling me, I, I personally have done what they've asked for each step of the way. You know, in getting an application through. And they're a little frustrated because the health department has not made it easier for them having these overlapping areas. And you know, just, I don't know what, what else to say in the position other than they, you know, at least that what they're conveying to me. And I'm not asking to tell me, you know, what they want, you know, what I think I want them to hear and just tell me how it is. And you know, we have a legitimate application, we have all kinds of data to support all the, you know, all the aspects. We understand that this is the state's waters and that we, to, to take advantage of them, we have to use it to public benefit. And that's true with, you know, all water systems, you know, using, you know, taking advantage of water rights. So the rights really are not ours or not the ports, they're really the people of Washington State. And each of us as an entity are supposed to use it to the best public benefit to the state, you know, for the state's point of view. So anyway, I think that answers at least as far as I know on Department of Ecology.
Thanks, Jeff. We, we do have the engineers here to, they want to ask questions or if we want to ask questions of them.
I, 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 you know, I mean, there's always, you can get into the nitty gritty, the, I always look at this as kind of a, you know, 30,000 foot view looking down and says, okay, so the issue is will or will not the port allow me to use their system, whatever, you know, with the caveats and the guidelines that the port wants to put in to use their system as an observation well for that period as described in the memo. And that's really what, you know, really boils down to.
Sure. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I personally have a couple more questions that have come up just, just recently, since we took, listening to what you said. And I know I asked this question before, but it was, it was answered, it was answered fairly well, but what, what are your options besides the ports well? What, what can you do?
There's, you know, ecology, from the college's point of view, they want, first of all, they want to use the least active or the ones that have the gap to give them the best data. For example, we could pursue Washington Water more, two issues. They're a little more distant from our well to, so I know it's, they're looking for proximity as well as same aquifer. There's basically you know, three other user, or two other users that are in the same aquifer. And, you know, one is Lakeland Village, one is Washington Water, and one's the important one, it's us. And Lakeland Village does not, they've had, I guess, some bad experiences with ecology over the years in getting their water rights. They do, their, their words to me is they hope I succeed and get my water rights, but they just don't want to participate, use their system as an observation well. They've had enough trouble, not by us or, you know, you or the port or anybody else, but in their process of getting water rights, I think they've, they feel that they've gotten burned nine different ways and they just feel that, you know, they just don't want to open that box. I have not talked to Washington Water mainly, and the only reason I approached, one reason I approached Lakeland is they do have any, a kind of an emergency well, and so it's not actively being pumped a lot of times in this time of the year. It's a little bit different elevation, but my engineer, my hydrologist says it's in the same aquifer, but it's a little bit different elevation. So there's some deviations, but it's close. Washington Waters is in the same aquifer, same elevation. The problem there is they're pumping you know, daily, and their tank storage is nothing like the ports, and they have, you know, probably three times more, they have about 38 or 40 users. And so it's to, to be able to reserve up, it's going to, you know, it can get cost prohibitive. And, and part of their issue is they got a small tank. So there's only so far they can go at this point other than building another tank or constructing some mechanism to allow them to keep their, you know, pump quiet for a while. As mentioned in the memo, there is some ways around that, but it, from my hydrologist's point of view, and you can check with, and that's Mike Crowe Kramer from Robinson Noble. But my understanding is that just, you know, that extra activity just complicates and makes it more difficult for, you know, the whole process of engineering testing and what have you. So does it mean it's impossible? You know, like it got enough money that's worth the problem? No, it's not impossible, but just, you know, it's, it's, it's way beyond what the port or us have to do to do this test way. I mean, because it's literally like building them another tank to be able to keep them quiet, you know, while, while the test is running. And I mean, that just gets, for either one of us, building another tank is not something we want to get into.
So our well's the best well.
It's, it's the best. There's, if there was another well that wasn't artesian, it might be a little bit better because it complicates a little bit because you have pressure on it because it's artesian. So there is actually some pressure coming up, but as far as the hydrologist is saying, Mike's saying, this, it, it's just another set of calculations. The biggest thing is the quiet period. So
My, my second question, you mentioned fire flow. And so we have, we have a hydrant system, we have commercial buildings with sprinkler systems. If there were to be a, a fire of any significance during that 72-hour period, you know, do, do we need to let the local fire department know that, that their hydrant system shut down or anything like that?
First, two things, two, two points in it. I, one point is to let, I think they need to know that something's happening, number one. Number two is, my understanding from my crowd cramer is based upon how we're structuring this, the port will have its full hundred, you know, 90 minutes of 1,250 gallons a minute in the tank without, without us ever touching it. The, the, you know, that, but that's an issue, you know, sequencing up the, you know, our pumps and the barometers and everything else, getting sequence with each other so that, that we maximize, take advantage of the maximum quiet period of your well, you know, in the, in the process. But and at the same time, I would also say that that I have, you know, I can talk to Mike about this, but, you know, if there was a fire, I think all bets are off. You stop what we're doing, you, you, your pumps hit on and, you know, you know, you know, it's kind of like when something else happens, it's, you know, the pump test relative to the human life and property, you know, it doesn't matter. I mean, it matters, but I'm saying we, we can do this again. You, you may not, you know, save a life, you may not, you know.
Somebody definitely get up there and turn the
Well, and the pumps for you are all down at the port. So, and, right, and so and literally, we're not closing any valves, you know, of yours. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna leave, my understanding, we're gonna leave you open and charged all the way, all through this process. We're just gonna get in sync with you. So, you know, with the port system so that, you know, based upon like what, what February 2018, and I realize you have more residential connections since, but there was like, there was one period in there where there's like 14 days without a pump turning on. I mean, that's, we don't need 14 days. I mean, if you, I know there's at least 10 more houses now that are active using water. But I mean, double it, you got seven days. I mean, my understanding from Robinson Noble is, you know, we really only need about four days, you know, two in the front, one during and one after. So, so all I'm saying is the issue of fire flow, I would say it's, you know, it's got to be an override issue, meaning if, if it does truly happen, stop the test, move on and, you know, let, you know, let the system do what it's supposed to do. But even with that, you're going to have your still, your full 90 minutes of 1,250 water all the time, all through this process. Unless your pumps or gauges fail.
Right, yeah.
Which, which case I can't control that. So
That was the two questions that popped into my head.
Okay. So Jeff, for the sake of the audience, I guess, the reason they want to do this test is to clarify water rights for you, right? For your system. And will that interfere for the water rights that the, the port currently has? And will the tribes object to any of that?
My understanding from Marie Peter at Department of College is the tribe is aware of yours and ours and anything else and why we're 14. They're not saying no. And based upon shellfish and the Swaxton acquiring some water rights this, this year, we'll kill the, kill that. But Got it. Always calls, always phone. So, so whether it interferes, I can't tell you because I don't know the law on how that works. But two, you know, the one thing, ours, our application was senior to the port. My understanding from ecology is they're trying to figure out how to work this out in such a way. And part of the problem that's made it more difficult too, besides the overlapping service areas and that, is that when the port acquired it, it's water rights. For, for some reason, and, and I, at least ecology hasn't told me otherwise, but that the port, the port didn't have to do their test for, and I don't know, I know you don't know. But I never heard anything about it until after, after well effort is done. So the port never, never did a 24-hour pump So the port never, never did a twenty four hour pump test, and so it never had an idea how its impact would be. So whether that means, I do know that once you put in that second well, it's a requirement, you're gonna have to do that pump test. But as far as, uh, interfering, I know, I personally, when I say I know, at least I've been told. Because again, I'm not on the legal side, I'm not on the engineering side, but I've been told that. Like, like your first segment of one hundred and thirty three connections. Because that's apparently limited by your, 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 um, your well, you know, that's on site there down by the bay. Um, no, it's not gonna impact that. And I don't know about the second one because that one's a whole different animal that it's not only. At least the way the permit's written, as I read it. The port's gonna have to do a pump test, but it instead of like mines at a hundred and twenty five gallons a minute for the twenty four hours. The port's gonna have to do one at five hundred and fifty gallons or five hundred and fifty five gallons a minute for twenty four hours. And that test will be totally, you know, totally different, what impact that had, I do not know.
So I don't know if this is appropriate to ask our engineers at all right now, but what their thought is, would it impact our ability to. Keep our water rights and maybe to expand, you know, uh, that's just our concern as. Being protective of our taxpayers and the investment that they've done for this infrastructure.
Sure.
But I don't know if that's appropriate to ask them now or not, but anyway.
I'll, I'll let you.
Other question.
Yeah, yeah, I'll let you ask them, I, I can't answer for them.
Yeah.
I mean, all, all I can tell you is the sequence of events, I can tell what the college is telling me. You know, they're looking how to, to work the problem, they're asking me, okay, I put in an application for a hundred acre feet. What could you get by with, you know, now and just solve the problem? So, you know, like anything, because you're dealing with people, houses and all this kind of thing, you know, all the different things that control water. I prepared, uh, uh, Excel presentation to, you know, a one page chart that showed. If it's this, it's this, if it's, you know, it's because we had no idea if it's gonna be this much. What we've noticed, I don't know if the ports noticed this, but since March, you know, when they started having COVID shutdowns. Our water consumption went up. About forty, fifty percent. There was maybe not close because our average daily use was about a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty gallons per household. In the winter time and now it's a two hundred to two ten. And so that all, you know, so I had to prepare for them kind of a list of, you know, if it's this, it's this, if it's that, it's that, and then. And then again, we don't know how fast things would develop and I, like you, like the port. I don't, I don't want, you know, a small amount of acre footage and be caught short, you know, for the last part of the service area. So, you know, I've conveyed to the ecology of the service area, I've conveyed the high, the low, the fast, the slow development. I've played to them about, you know, the sense of consumption based on what's happening with COVID. So, um, which they've totally, totally appreciate because that gives them insight as to, you know, how they would approach this. And again, there's been no negative comment from the tribes in the discussion between ecology and the tribes. With regards to ours or as I understand with the ports either.
Jason, did you have a comment on Judy's question?
Yeah, sorry, I, uh, my zoom cut out right in the middle of that and I had to reload it, but, uh, I believe the question was, correct me if I'm wrong. Is, uh, does the test or, or development of Jeff's have an impact on the port's water right? Or the ability to, to, to perfect it? Is that basically what the question was?
Yes, that's correct.
I would say, y- y- you know, we don't know that answer for sure, and that was one of the purposes of the test. Uh, I think that's one of the reasons why ecology wants to, to complete the test is to be able to. Not only inform the impairment test, but also the availability test, which are two things that need to be considered in issuance of a new water right. And as you, as you stack water rights on top of each other in a, in a, in a, you know, confined area, especially one. Uh, along the shoreline that has a potential for seawater intrusion. Those are questions that need to be answered through a collection of data such as a test like this.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Jeff, you said that, uh, the tribes hadn't said no to this, or do you expand in your system if they said yes?
So, so say that again, so in other words, I hear two different questions.
Earlier, you said that the tribe didn't have any objection to you expanding your system or your water right. You said they haven't said no, my question is, have they said yes?
No, because they can't, it hasn't come before with the data. You know, it's in of itself what they know to this point, they have said, they have not said no.
So when's the last time you talked to them about it?
I talked to Marie here, uh, yesterday. Again, I mean, now, when she talked to the, when she talked to the, um, the tribes. The initial contact with her, with them was like in, uh, when I say initial. When we got to this point, thinking about doing this test, uh, Marie talked to, uh. Can't remember her name, uh, at Miss Quachsen. And discussed it in this, I want to say this was in the, um, early, uh, February last year. Approximately. And I, I believe there was another conversation sometime in, in, um. In late summer because we put in for next, because the test did not occur yet. We were doing a process of trying to get to a test. Uh, we put in for extension on the test and were granted an extension on the timetable of getting the test as long as we were actively working it. And so I believe at that point she was, uh, Marie was in touch with, uh, the gal at Swaxton.
Erica?
Yes, yes, there you go.
So have, have, have you presented kind of a, a conceptual mitigation framework, you know, impact analysis to the tribes to have them evaluated yet?
Yes, and actually did that in two thousand and ten. Actually gave them two, two different, two different options. We were, we, one, in the beginning picked a different approach than the port where they were using the. Into Shurri Creek. We initially went with a, uh, an approach using action of Trails End Lake. The problem with Trails End Lake, while we had quantity, the tribe was concerned about temperature. And that the well and the source in their opinion of that lake wasn't above our aquifer. And, and so they did not want to use that. For that, for those, the, the stick in my mind, when I, this was back before Erica's time. So this is like in two thousand and ten, so then I created another draft. And then it wasn't going anywhere with the college at that moment, not because it wasn't valid, but just the, uh. Other issues that were happening with the college at the time. And, um. At the same time, I, I presented a plan to Mason County Waste Utilities. And got a letter of authorization that I could use. You know, because basically we're pumping waters going through the houses. By and large, especially in the winter time, and then being processed and treated back out to the, you know, to the basin. So, so I do have that approval, you know, back in two thousand and ten with the county. County is just waiting for me to, you know, document when it's, you know, actually being used. They, that's the only question they have for me is, you know, has it been used yet? And I said, no, because a lot of rights have not been achieved yet.
Right, I, I guess my question though was specifically to the tribes and, um, but you haven't had any formal feedback from the tribes?
Not in the, no, not in the last year, not about the last three years.
So Jeff, how many acre feet of water rights are you trying to go for?
I, I have to go look at that plan because I basically could set up a range, the application was for a hundred acre feet.
Okay, and you are currently at what?
I'm an exempt well, so I'm limited to the five thousand gallons a day, which I, I can't remember, I think it's around five point something acre feet a year.
Three point eight, I think.
Or whatever, yeah, it's, it's a small, small number.
Okay.
I had a question for, oh, go ahead, Judy.
No, you go ahead.
It's maybe for the engineer, um, when Jeff sent us the maps, I, I had a question that popped into my head, um. Who draws the lines, who approves them and are they a matter of law? Or, you know, do we ever cross lines? Can, and what, what happens? How's that work?
Are you asking me or your engineer?
The engineer.
Okay, go ahead.
Right, so that's governed by municipal water law. And so, no, it would not be typical to have lines crossing. Um, and so, uh, essentially the Port of Allen, um, in the original water right, uh, submittal that they'd done back in two thousand and thirteen. Had asked for a service area to include the Port of Allen. Uh, sorry, the, the town of Allen, UGA, outside of Lakeland Village. And so that ultimately is what got approved by the, uh, State Department of Health. Now, within that, there were a number of existing water systems. Uh, among those is the Allen Carey system. That was a group B system at the time. And so with a group B system, um, that finds itself within the boundaries of a large, of a group A water system. The group B essentially, um, granted the ability to develop. Out the number of currently approved connections. Within the, um, boundaries, the existing boundaries of that group B. Um, so whatever number that was, uh, at the time would be normally what would be accorded to the Allen Carey water system. Then outside of that, um, the port water system would be offered the right of first refusal. To serve any additional connections. Now, um, I know that, uh, Allen Carey has either since been approved as a group A. Or is in the process of becoming approved as a group A water system. That's somewhat complicated and, uh, and abnormal situation. Um, that, the normal situation, if a water system was to propose. Gaining additional services, transitioning from a group B to a group A system while it being within the boundaries of an existing group A. Would be that either the group, the existing group A would, um, come to agreement. With that expanding water system and they would mutually, um, you know, redraw the boundaries and now, um. They would actually separate the service areas, there would not be that overlap because. The expanding system is no longer a group B, it's, it's a municipal water system when it transitions to being a group A essentially. Um, otherwise, if the claim was made that. The existing group A being the Port of Allen could not provide service. Uh, in a, at least within a timely or reasonable fashion. To any of the lots requiring water, then, um, you know, that. Case could be made and, uh, typically brought before a body in the county. Uh, otherwise, uh, ultimately go to state superior court. And would result in a decision on whether or not the Port of Allen in this case could serve. Whatever area was being, uh, asked for or claimed by the expanding water system. And then, you know, there would be an adjudication and, and one would, uh, be, uh, assigned that area, but there, there would not be overlap.
I have a question.
Thanks Doug.
Um, this is probably a question for the engineers. How many connect a hundred acre feet service?
I'll, uh.
Park idea.
Yeah, I'll defer to Doug since he's the engineer, I'm a hydrogeologist, but. Just kidding, but yeah, and I do want to correct, I, um, Jeff was right, it, it is five acre feet and change on their exemption, so I just wanted to correct that real fast. Doug, do you? I, I'm giving, uh, filling some airspace here while Doug does some calculations, I can see, so.
Thank you.
Could I put out one thing while Doug's doing the calculations? There is an R, RCW that needs to be looked at by the port and port's attorney. Uh, addressing this issue, not so much as an overlap, but ultimately as an overlap, and that's RC fifty three, I think, oh, eight forty. And that needs to be looked at. Because it appears that this is where the state should, in doing the approval, the health department side, during approval of water systems. Both the port and us can ask for whatever we want. But ultimately, it's the Department of Health that's the rule on what the service area is going to be. And the problem is the Department of Health didn't use that RCW, it's a port RCW. Uh, about what ports could serve or not serve and how, how it's supposed to work when they kind of butt up against each other. So I think, I think that needs to be looked at. Long term.
Sorry, what was that RCW reference?
I believe, I believe I'm going out the top of my head, but I believe it's, uh, fifty three oh eight forty.
Okay.
Mr. Carey.
Wait on that, please. Because I was involved in that at the beginning and that question was brought up when we first got in, when the port first got into the water system. And it was challenged whether ports could serve private entities. And in the RCW, it says that they can build water sewer, whatever they need to serve their own properties. And adjacent properties if nothing is available. Once our system was established, then it was considered the municipal system and that was no longer a question and, and. We were assured by legal and by DOH and by ecology that that no longer applied, that we, that the port was a municipal system. With all the rights thereof.
Thanks Bonnie, uh, Mr. Carey, hi, uh, I'm Joe Brogan. Outside, uh, council for the port and, uh. I appreciate, uh, you've, I think you've done a great job, Doug Peel has done a great job kind of outlining. Uh, your position and, and what the issues are. And I think, you know, uh, I've worked with the, the port commissioners for quite a long time and, you know. I think I share their approach, which is, uh, always kind of to work through these issues and see if we can come up with a. With a path forward and a solution and I, and you know, it's, this has been around, this issue's been around for quite some time and. I think this, uh, this workshop kind of tees up some of the, the, the issues for resolution ultimately. So everyone can move forward with confidence and so. I have a couple of questions that relate to exactly what we've been talking about. To just try to help us move through, uh, information gathering on our side, right? And then, uh, with an eye towards, uh, seeing if, uh. There's any, uh, opportunity to, to certainly cooperate with the, uh, with your testing request. And so, uh, so we're simply just doing our due diligence. Uh, and, uh, there are some gaps in my knowledge that I apologize might appear repetitive. Uh, to, uh, one or everyone on the call, but I'm wondering if I could just. Uh, throw out these two or three questions and see where, i- if that helps fill in some of the gaps and suggests the next, the next step. The, related to what Larry asked, um, which was, you know, the hundred acre feet. Uh, which I think you indicated was part of your original, at least your original request. You know, as a general back of the envelope, it, it airs on the high side, but the answer to that question is typically. Uh, three connections per acre foot, but that was based on. You know, when I first started practicing water law about twenty years ago, you know, the three hundred and fifty gallon per day assignment. To, uh, domestic water use, but a lot of the data has developed since then and I think. What you've cited, which, you know, down a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy gallons per day is more than norm. Uh, with respect to the use, but what I, so my specific question there is, is in terms of connections. Mr. Carey and Doug, what, what are you currently contemplated, contemplating within that? That service area in terms of number of connections?
In that, and it's, it's been complicated because obviously the port has made some connections in there, in that area. In that, and it's, it's been complicated because obviously the port has made some connections in there, in that area. But it originally had, um, A two parcels that fronted. Um, the port, from the ports, uh, we're obviously in fourteen of them right now. The, uh, port is in, I believe, ten, five, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, live, you know, seventeen almost live, you know, ten are live and the other seven are almost live currently. I believe where we front lines, there's, uh, somewhere in the range, depending how you look at it and how it develops, somewhere between, on the low end, maybe nine or ten, on the high end, maybe fifteen, sixteen connections where we front, you know, li- our lines are parallel or similar location to, to the ports line.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And so, given the, the, the density, what are you contemplating? I, I thought I saw a chart of upwards of over two hundred connections at one point. Is that?
I mean, I, I mean, it was, it was in discussion. I mean, it went, because initially we provided an application like, because the port, nobody was in there in two thousand and three, nobody was in there in two thousand and four.
Right.
We, we provided an app, we did a quick engineering study of it and said, okay, what's the build of the lots? What can we do? And what do we need, you know? What we needed as what we owned and adjacent neighbors, we didn't need three hundred, a hundred acre feet. We didn't need that. But, but in the context of pur- purveying water to public benefit, where, you know, it's not just for me or neighbors, you know, for the, that block of houses and what have you, that would eventually develop. Um, we did a quick engineering and bought off and I, I said, okay, what's it going to take? And, you know, there, there was, like you said, the three fifty rule was in there. So I used that to determine, okay, it's a hundred acre feet. Uh, because nobody else could say otherwise. And so, that's how we went at, at the application. If ecology came back to me and said, hey, we can do this, but it's going to be, you know, seventy-five or whatever, you know, we'd work with it. I mean, the issue, the issue was, you know, it's just, it's been compounded over time with different parties. And unfortunately, you know, it just, it didn't work out the way it should have. But that's, we're, we're not trying to solve that problem here. The, the, we're trying to address the thing. As Larry's told me a number of times, I can't fix the past. Let's try to take today and say, okay, here's where we are. What can we do to move forward? I don't really want anything to do with what the port's trying to do. But, I, you know, and normally I just let go, but the problem is with the port, and, and I don't mean this as a problem in the sense of problem, but the, where it's going is, unfortunately, you know, like, there's one party, Ricardo, and I can't remember how his last name's pronounced, it starts with S H. But, you know, he shared with, with me what happened to his rates from one year to the next. So I extrapolated that to my users and talked to people in my system and said, if you want me to, you want me to turn this over to the port? The whole system. They took a look at and said, no way in hell. They just, they didn't want to be part of it in, for those numbers. And I know the port has to recover what it has to recover. I'm not arguing that that. It's just that my rate structure is lower. I mean, we, we each got a lot of money involved here. And part of the frustration is that the port would never have been in here had our family not put in that sewer. And, but then to get, you know, so to speak, feeling like getting railroaded on the other side, just, ah, you know, it's, it's not, not the way I think it should come down. So, the bottom line is, if there's a service area, I mean, if the Department of Health says, okay, we're doing you this much and that's it, you cannot expand. You know, we'll plead our case as hard as we can because, I mean, there's adjacent lots I have not included that belong to our family, but, but I will, you know, in the end, I have to do whatever they rule on. So at that, at that number and realizing the port's already about seventeen lot, you know, connections into it, we're talking, you know, somewhere around, you know, fifty more would be in that service area. And so, eh, you know, we would obviously pursue where we have property and, and in that block. I mean, I can't, you know, if we own five lots and there's five other lots and we're trying to go to ours, obviously I got purvey water to those. So it's not like, if, if the family has twenty more lots and that's it, done. As, you know, the state's not going to support us on that. They're going to say, hey, you need to purvey, if we're going to use it to public benefit, then you got to serve everybody that you're going past to go to yours. So, uh, so, you know, that we're talking, you know, potentially a couple acres, maybe as many as six. I do not know. This point, I have not, you know, engineered.
About acre feet?
No, no, I'm, I'm talking about acres of land that, that are in the I, I don't, I, I don't know the acre foot at this point.
Right. So the number of connections, then you, you, I hear you say, uh, maybe around fifty additional?
Correct. Within our current service area.
I'm sorry, who's that? Doug, is that your understanding? Doug Peel?
Um, but to be honest, I'm not sure of that. There does appear to be approximately that many lots in the service area. Um, but I'm, I'm actually involved with the, the Port of Allen. I, I prepared the Port of Allen's, uh, water system plan.
Oh, okay. I understand.
And for the record, the
I'm sorry Doug, I thought you were working for Mr. Carey.
No, well, Northwest Water is in the sense of they're our satellite management agency.
Okay.
They have been since, I, I can't remember when, uh, at least, I don't know, it's at least seven or eight years.
Okay. And I guess what, and the reason I ask that question, um, Mr. Carey, is you could probably guess, you know, I'm trying, what, what we're trying to do as Commissioner Scott and Commissioners Cooper identified earlier is, um, you know, what, we, the port clearly wants to cooperate when, uh, when, at all possible opportunities. What their charge, the commissioners are charged with doing is, as I think you acknowledged earlier, is looking out for the taxpayers' interests and their own capital investments and such. And so, that is really where we come from on this. And, uh, so in asking about that, what I'm trying to do in terms of ascertaining number of connections is just trying to assess what the, what the relative impact would be of having two separate service areas, you know, two separate cis Group As operating there. You know, the, um, the port was granted, you know, that water right in, in, uh, according to ecology in twenty-ten. And, uh, the place of use was the, the Allen UGA at that time. Um, and so therein lies, as I think Doug outlined it, kind of the confounding issue. And, um, uh, from your perspective, I guess to move on, you know, and ecology clearly in its July letter, uh, was again, uh, asking you, or they used the term strongly advised you to, to suspend work on this permit and, and try to negotiate with the port, you know, for wholesale or direct service water. Is that, uh, do you think that ship has sailed, to be honest with you, or is that something that is still a potential resolution here?
Well, I mean, until the day you go six feet under, it's always an option. So that's, that issue. Um, the, the only problem is that, you know, in a, when I say not a problem, is in, in Larry doing his due diligence, it's a, and I don't know who created the report. As a taxpayer, as a taxpayer for the Port of Allen also, you know, and I'm kind of like looking at this from two different angles, as a taxpayer and as a water purveyor. Technically speaking, as I, putting the taxpayer's hat on, if the director has a letter from his technical staff that's saying, we don't need your system, we don't need your well and all this. I, on that side, I'd have trouble saying, okay, why are they paying any money to, to do this? I, you know, I, so I mean, we, we, we got a lot of, so if good faith is in the process, anything's possible. But, but there's documents now that are in the, in, in, you know, on the public domain that basically are saying, you know, we don't need, you know, I mean, and I'm giving you a short version. They explained on the distribution system, the big issue I had with it, uh, with that whole grant was dealing with. And I, I wasn't looking for a one-to-one return in any way, shape or form. But the problem I was looking at is we're fronting some, you know, right outside these lots, at least forty-two, if not all fifty. And I looked at it that you, you can say whatever you want, but for five thousand bucks on the port side, they don't even have to touch my well. They can just put a pipe in the crossover and bang. They, they have access to these fifty lots instantly. To me, that's, look, you had to say, okay, they instantly for five thousand bucks can get, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in connection fees. Why in the hell would I sell it for fifty plus, you know, five connections or whatever it was at the time? And, and so then I did the math the other way. And said, let's just tell, say everybody says, take a hike at each other, you know, which is not the way I like to work, but to say we can't, we just, you know, don't like each other, want to go our different ways. I took the tack and said, look, if we can't get closer on that, I am prepared to say, what system is it? I have my investment, I recovered some. It will pay me with the current rate structure and the current cost structure, about six percent when all taxes and all things are done. Well, you know, that's better than CDs, anything else that's out there. So what the hell, you know? This, you'll find that, you know, that's not where I don't believe is correct, what should happen. But I'm just saying, looking at extremes, where we were, what the port was proposing, what I could do, or just say the hell with the whole thing, it didn't, it didn't make financial sense. And I don't mean it in the sense that I had to make something on my money. We just were not close. And I proposed, I think the port has documents for me, what I proposed based upon what I heard in meetings and, you know, they may not like the numbers. Um, but we weren't, we weren't close and no way I wanted to go any further with it. And I did, to Larry's credit, we worked a number of different options. Uh, and, uh, you tried different things, but Department of Health did not want to do certain things and, you know, so we're all kind of subject to that ruling, so. And the grant, the grant that the port was going to get was, can only be used a specific way. And so, yeah, here we are.
Okay.
That issue. So nothing's dead until we're six feet under, but.
Well, so I have a question, Jeff.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that loan program is still open.
Right.
If we could work something there that worked, are you still open to the idea of selling?
Sure. Oh, I mean, it can never, you'd never say no, at least where I come from. And as in commerce, you know, it's an asset, it's, you know, it has a, it has a value or doesn't have a value, depending what makes sense. My only concern is then, when you got documentation saying really it, you really didn't need, if it wasn't for the grant, you wouldn't touch it. Because I think the words that I recall things said. I'll let it be.
Yeah, I can tell you, you know, that, that is, you know, to share a, a similar, uh, you know, it's, it's the six feet under phrase, it's, uh, as these issues evolve, you know, as a port, we also, our thinking needs to evolve, our risk assessment needs to evolve. And so, numbers can change from the standpoint of how we see the issue at any particular point in time. Larry, could you just spend two minutes and enlighten me on what is this loan program that?
Okay, it's a loan program from the Department of Ecology and it's for consolidating water systems. And they gave us a number. They said, you know, if you can make this work, we'll give you a hundred thousand dollars to buy out Mr. Carey. And we'll forgive fifty of it. And you'll be on the hook for the other fifty. So what I was trying to do was put us in a situation where what we could do would be give him the fifty and give him some connections so he got more value than the fifty.
Right.
Because the connections are worth five thousand apiece. And, you know, try to, try to get the deal done. Um, the other side of that though, was what we looked at is, when we were looking at this, the, uh, PUD number one had acquired thirty-two water systems at about thirteen hundred dollars a connection. And, you know, they did that all in a, I don't know, six-month period maybe? And so, that, excuse me, that pretty much establishes the value. And he had fourteen connections. So, you know, do the math. And, you know, we're, we felt like we were offering a lot more than what basically the market was.
Yeah. Okay. And Mr. Carey, you didn't exactly see it that way without having to get.
Obviously not.
Well, I, I agree with Larry. He did, he did do that work and that is what PUD one said. The difference in, the problem with all these other water systems is they're like an existing system. You're picking up existing clients. What's the difference between ours and the, in my opinion, the difference between ours and the, using PUD one, is the fact that we front between forty-two and fifty-one lots that with little or no cost, you know, bang, there.
Yeah, that is different. Yeah, I'll grant you that. I agree.
But, but isn't one differentiator in that, though, that those existing systems do have water rights able to cover all their connections?
Yeah, they did. They did. Um, and that, that was in two thousand and nineteen that they acquired all those systems. So.
I think it was before that, wasn't it?
No, it was.
But there was two runs.
Right. So I think it was some right at the end of two thousand and eighteen and then beginning of two thousand and nineteen. But it all happened in like three-month period. Because the EDC used to have these meetings once a month of all of the different people, you know, like myself, everybody ran some kind of an agency and PUD was represented there. And the guy that was running it at that point was the one who, you know, mentioned this and I talked to him at some length about it, so.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but that's where that number came from. I do remember telling Jeff that number and watching his face go white.
Yeah. Well, you know, and, and simply, if I could take just another minute or two in, in trying to, uh, get my head around a potential next step here, um, the, uh, I, I don't want to suggest we take, you know, forty-five days to explore that again if, if there's nothing further to be, uh, reviewed. Is, is it your sense, Larry, that, that is something that the, the commissioners, you and the commissioners might be interested in doing? I'll, I'll ask you to respond, then miss, see Mr. Carey's view on that.
Well, what I'd like to do is go back to ecology because they came to me and said, you know, this grant program's still open. And see if maybe we can't come up with some numbers that work.
Yeah.
You know, what I was working with last time was the numbers they gave us. Now, they might be interested in giving us some better numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to explore that. And then come back to Mr. Carey and say, you know, what do you think about this?
It's a little complicated as well. There's a match that they possibly forgive. So, there's some money that, that we're on the hook for, but, um, they may forgive it. So there's, there's, we have to come up with some money as well.
Right. So Commissioner Cooper, we could do, like we do with the, a lot of folks do with the PPP long, we could do, uh, a worst-case, best-case scenario.
Absolutely, yeah. And I, I know, um, I won't speak for the other two, but, but I personally, you know, would be totally interested in exploring that, knowing that, you know, if, as long as Jeff's not six feet under, that he's not, so, he hasn't thrown it out yet. So I don't, I haven't either. I know, I don't think Larry has either. Like he said, ecology reached out to him and said that, that the money for that grant is still available, but there, there is some complications with it as far as, um, coming up. As far as, um, coming up with money on our end that could be forgiven, but could not be forgiven. So kind of coming up with that side of it.
I think I would like to pursue that in too. I mean, Jeff, I know you've made a big investment in, in time and effort and money. Um, so I think it would, and being a municipality, I think that's where we kind of have a little, uh, I think a leg up to kind of help the circumstances. So I, I'd like to pursue purchasing your system.
My, my only issue in the whole thing is, is that in, we can work that and that's fine. We can, you know, go down best, worst cases and all that. The other thing is there's this timetable of trying to do the pump test and trying to do these tests need to be done. They're, they're better done in the winter than they are in the summer and fall. And so by, by delaying, you know, another month or two on the, on the hope that we can work something out, we're just delaying, I have this problem with ecology that I need to do this test. And in the end, even if you acquire us, the port's going to need to know what the impact of that well is, no matter what. Because technically, that, as I stated in a couple, uh, back when we had, uh, public meetings, you know, and as far as, you know, the port, that there is a certain amount of acre feet that that well can provide the port as an interim to getting your quote unquote second, you know, big well. It's not going to provide you, uh, you know, five hundred, you know, gallons a minute and three hundred acre feet. There's just no way. It's a, it's a six inch well. But it can provide you a hundred acre feet. You know, depending on you, how you look at that, that's, you know, for the old school, that's three, you know, ballpark three hundred, there's many, maybe it's five hundred connections. So, so that, you know, that has that, that the problem is in the event we don't, then in effect, by the delay, we've skipped a whole nother year.
I, I would agree that we should not slow down the testing process while we explore this. I mean, we, we're going to do our due diligence. We should still.
I have to kind of ask this elephant in the room in, in a sense too, that, that, you know, as in the support of the port and the tax, say, we do let them test it. I mean, the whole point is for him to get the water rights, but what happens if we disagree with him getting those water rights? Well, that, is that something that we can do and will that create more trouble down the road, not only for Jeff or for us? I don't know if I'm making that clear.
Yeah, to be honest, I mean, Commissioner Scott, I, I think that, uh, there are two options here. One is, uh, I, I know that your permit, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Carey runs through September of twenty twenty-two with your extension, right?
I think so.
It does. And so you do have the fall, winter, twenty-one.
Well, can I just say something about that? I, I, you know, uh, i- i- unless I, I'm just racking my brain, I, I don't believe there's necessarily a seasonal urgency here in this setting, is there? I mean, what, what is it about the winter?
We have, we have less, less usages on both systems.
Okay, okay, but.
In a sense, we're not.
But that's manageable.
We're not talking fish. We're not talking fish. We're talking, you know, mitigating streams. We're talking how to get to the quietest periods of the time that they would prefer to get it through.
Okay, fair enough. But, but, but I, I mean, that, that's kind of a, a preference. That's not a requirement. I mean, we, we do pumping tests all the time during the winter for, for.
Yeah, I mean, I did, they didn't put it in. Yeah, they, they didn't put it in the, in the permit.
That's right. So we're not.
Can you say that?
To just the fall and winter.
Yeah.
And the usage is up because everybody's stay at home right now. Kids are home and.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's up, like I said, now to two twenty, you know, two hundred and twenty gallons a day per household on our system.
And I think for purposes of testing, Jeff, don't get me wrong, the way I took it was, uh, winter time per day usage is lower than summer primarily because of obligations.
Right. All right. So if I could, the, uh, so there's some question whether, uh, you know, that in terms of the timing of the test, and that's why I raised the schedule. And I appreciate Tyson, your input on that. Commissioner Scott, I, I think I would, uh, yeah, be comfortable, you know, answering that, uh, I, I agree that if we were to, uh, move forward with a, a test, a testing agreement, um, that, uh, in order to, uh, preserve our position, Mr. Carey, we probably put a paragraph in there that addresses, uh, the point made by Commissioner Scott that the, that port isn't necessarily consenting to, uh, the, the further development of the, of your water system, et cetera, would need to be.
No, I, I would think that's reasonable. You're remembering just having to back your mind there that, um, again, we had this weird situation where we're the, we're the senior applicant to those three hundred acre feet. So I, that's why it's, I don't know the answer to that, you know, what Judy's asking, but at least, you know, that's, oh, it's in the background. At least you know.
Right. Well, uh, yeah, I under, I understand that and, and honestly, uh, the, cause we're having a good discussion. The leverage on our side is unless we, we reach an agreement on access to a port facility, you're not going to be able to get access to the port well.
Right.
So I think we want to work with you, um, you know, frankly, to, to share our good faith, we, we've, uh, we've developed a draft testing agreement based on your request. And we were working, we're going down that road. And then we had these associated questions. And so we're, we have a ninety percent product already for the testing agreement. And depending on the outcome of our discussion today, we're gonna, you know, tweak that slightly, send it to you in draft form for discussion. And we could still do that, Commissioner Cooper. Um, and maybe it's going to end up tracking the same efforts that Larry has discussed with the Department of Ecology. And that maybe, uh, a period of time where, um, we negotiate with you to see if there is a purchase option. And so, um, I don't see them as mutually exclusive, um, uh, necessarily. And so I think, uh, Commissioner Cooper, I know, uh, you know, as we, we get close to the five o'clock hour, we want to discuss next steps from the commissioner's standpoint. And so I typically, uh, will defer to comments of the executive director and certainly the commissioners as to what you believe the prudent next steps are. I just wanted to identify uh, those and get them out on the, out on the table for discussion. So I'll ask, uh, I'll turn that back over to you, uh, this, Mr. Cooper to see what you think.
Thanks, Joe. Um, I, I, I think we've been able to outline everything. Um, I do want to open it up to public comment. Um, but before I do, is there, uh, is there any more questions on the, the three things that we brought up that we asked Jeff to answer? Um, I don't want to leave anything out there unanswered. Um, Ted, Judy? Anything else? Larry?
Um, you know, Ted's been silent through this whole thing. Did you have anything to say or anything to add to it?
Well, I, I think I've done a pretty good job gathering research, especially with the information that's been provided to me. I, I appreciate it. You know, a lot of it is in dealing with water rights in my previous profession. I mean, they get very complicated. And I've made this comment not only to Jeff, but to other people. I don't know how our little town became such a mess with three systems, uh, crammed into one area. Uh, I'd like to see that as a port. Uh, clean that up into one consolidated water system. And I'm, my concern is, and I, uh, Larry, when you and I were talking to the Spoxon Tribal Representative, is that there's going to become a time where we're going to be very limited in our growth. So, uh, just because of that aquifer can't keep on producing that much water, in my opinion. But, uh, so I, I agree with everything that was said, and I really do appreciate the history. I know Commissioner Scott's been through it. Uh, Commissioner Cooper's been through it more than I have. And so I appreciate the conversations. So.
Like Joe said, go ahead, Judy, sorry.
Well, I, I'd kind of like to do some more discussion, not to delay too much, but, um, you know, there's still, still some concerns, uh, like with the agreement that Joe has created. We need to look at that as, you know, as a board and look at that too. So I don't want to make any decisions today. Let's put it that way.
No, no decisions today. We're, like Joe said, that we are working towards a testing agreement. Um, you know, we want to address the, uh, overlapping service areas and how, how we can best do that.
Yeah, I would really like to pursue about what Ted said, you know, creating one unit that's really just, uh, prudent, please.
And it, okay, as we draw to a close here, I think we just, uh, open it up for public comment if there's no more questions.
There's public comment.
Bonnie, go right ahead.
You got my husband.
Oh, hi, Richard.
Well, I'm a whole fire service guy, and I don't see any hydrants provisions in, in what, what I've seen of Jeff's system, both on the ground and through discussion. I, I don't see any plan for a fire protection in that whole strip along that upper road there. In other words, I guess I'm calling it a substandard system, and I don't know why the port would want to cooperating in that.
Oh, you froze. Richard, you froze up. Can, we heard substandard. What was after that?
That's probably said enough.
So, so there's no fire hydrants and.
Hydrants.
So I think what you might be talking about is the, uh, the new houses up there on Wheelwright Street?
Yes.
And I believe that that's port water system up there.
Not in the new development.
No. Not up along that street.
Not in Jeff's system.
Jeff's put in a strictly residential supply, no provisions for public water, uh, fire protection that I can find, identify.
And at a hundred and twenty-five gallons per minute, it takes twelve hundred and fifty gallons per minute to fight a fire.
It's, it's just, there's no hydrant. It's not a public water system.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Anybody else for public comment?
Uh, it's Ken Van Busker. I have a comment.
Go ahead, Ken.
Hey, I really appreciated listening to the discussion. I think it was, uh, beneficial. One thing that, uh, is concerning as a, a taxpayer in the Port of Allen is to try to minimize the cost. And if it is a, um, through a grant, the least amount of money that the, at all of the rate pairs for the Port of Allen, uh, that's those of us over in Belfair too. Um, the least amount that we would have to pay for that, the better. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ken. Anybody else?
I guess I don't see any problem with waiting thirty days. That's not going to change the parameters of a test. Or even two weeks, you might be able to get the answers you need in two weeks. Sounds like there's an awful lot of questions.
Okay. Anybody else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I raise one, one quick thing? Larry, if you and I could talk tomorrow, I got some excellent news on cameras. Uh, and I, I might have the rep, uh, for this company flying in from California to work with us. The prices are excellent. The technology is wonderful. So I just got that news before meeting. Okay, I'll, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay.
I ask, Commissioners, may I ask, uh, one question before we go?
Yes.
Uh, will we, uh, will we be, uh, able to communicate next with Mr. Carey? Uh, in the next several days as to, uh, any direction, uh, buyer through, uh, the executive director? What, what should he expect as far as next steps?
Yeah, I, we, we can give him direction to, to work with Jeff on the grant. Absolutely.
It's going to be a Monday morning phone call.
Okay, I just want.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks for bringing that up. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bye, Joe. Bye, Joe. It's Bonnie.
Oh, I know.
All right. Well, then, uh, I would move for adjournment. Thanks, everybody. We appreciate your participation. Thanks, Jeff.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Thank you so much.